Good evening, welcome to the night's storm meeting is Monday, November 9th, 2020, six o'clock. Let's just play a lively board in the 1887 building. Call the order as Mr. Tru and the call them. Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Inglesol?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Mr. Powsky?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue and one note that this means the notes for state statutes. I'm thinking we don't have any community presentation unless Jason has something to read in.
Nope, nothing to read in.
Alright, then we'll dispense with reading that. Do we have a presentation of the, from your own bus services tonight? Jason?
Not if Lisa's there, they do have a banner for us, I promise. I'll have to follow up there again, they said they were gonna be at this meeting, so.
Alright, approval of our minutes? Regular session attached? Questions? Comments? Turns? Hearing none, what's your promotion?
I move to approve the minutes of October 26th, 2020, regular sessions, school board meeting as presented. Meeting as presented.
There's second? I'll second it. So moving to second to approve the minutes of the October 26th, 2020, regular sessions, school board meeting as presented. Recall both please, Mr. Tru. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglesol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Powsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed? Yes, motion carried. General other fund bills, Mr. Tru. The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 141276 through 141423, wire transfers number 395 through 409, ACH check number 105 through 132, and voided check number 141127 in the combined amount of $1,253,624.8. And then there was some panel providing some additional information on the bill packet. And then following that is a copy of the treasurer's report through the month of September. Questions for Mr. Tru? Hearing none? Still hearing none? Looking for round motion?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of November 9th, 2020. Check numbers 141276 to 141423, wire numbers 395 to 409, ACH check numbers 105 to 132, and voided check number 141127 in the combined amount of $1,253,624.8 as presented.
There's a second? I'll second it. So moving to second to approve the general other fund bills of November 9th, 2020, checks number 141276, 141423, wire numbers 395 to 409, ACH check numbers 105 to 132, voided check number 141127 in the combined amount of $1,253,624.8 as presented. Recall both. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglesol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Powsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed? Yes. Proposed memorial for Officer Kirkpatrick.
Okay. After Mr. Kirkpatrick's passing, Sandy Jenkins had approached me and there were a number of people in the community from the school and so forth that wanted to do something in remembrance of Officer Kirkpatrick. And, you know, they had noted that Officer Kirkpatrick had a great sense of patriotism for the country and a lot of pride in, you know, his service and what he was able to do from that aspect to help others. And so Sandy had a couple people approach her and I asked her to go ahead and put together kind of a little bit of a mock-up and she and the family had an idea of having a location where they could have a couple of benches that would face the flagpole in that area. So we took that original plan and I went and talked to Chris Stebnitz and Stebnitz Builders because they did a really nice job through the Booster Club, kind of spearheading the elk statue back in the back by the concession stand and asked if, you know, using their resources or their contacts, if they could put together something in that aspect that would look, you know, nice facing the flagpole. And so this is kind of a mock-up from the design. Now, the memorial there, that plaque, I know that Sandy and the family didn't plan on something that large, but we have donations for the benches and there's other cash donations that have been collected for the pavers and the stonework. And so what I wanted to share with you today is just that concept and seek, you know, board approval because the location is in a more prominent area. We have memorials that are down at the other buildings for staff members and/or students who have passed. But, you know, this one is in a location kind of in the front of the high school. So I wanted to make sure the school board that you were okay with moving forward with a plan such as this. And, you know, to be frank, that flag area is kind of in need of cleaning up anyway around the flagpole and that location. So would kind of be putting together that, a recognition or remembrance of Officer Kirkpatrick there, a nice seating area in the front and also beautifying that flagpole area. And we would be putting together basically a fundraiser, a donation location where people could contribute funds to that if they would like. But it sounds like a lot of the labor and/or even materials may be donated if approved.
That's right next to the parking hall too, right?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Jason, what's the detail a little bit more on that? I see there's a sign that looks like it has a police symbol, like is there something that on there that would indicate that it's a memorial to him or?
Yeah, that sign in the location, that's just a rough draft where the architect kind of put that, but they would do a, want like a little memorial sign. We had talked about a plaque originally, but, you know, that's something that Sandy would work with the family on. I don't think we envisioned necessarily something that large, you know, in between, but there would be a remembrance, a little memorial plaque for Officer Kirkpatrick.
So there would be something in that location that it would indicate that that's?
Yep.
A memorial to him, okay.
Right.
I'd like to see if we could get a silhouette investigated for that of Officer Kirkpatrick.
For the memorial?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, kind of like the head shoulder shots of silhouette or something, yeah?
Yeah.
Kind of like the Hall of Fame plaques?
Yeah, I mean, it can show that it's a police department as well, but I think a great recognition would be a silhouette of him in remembrance as well.
Agreed. And I think that's what the family was more thinking in the lines of, so.
Okay.
But I want to really thank Stebnitz Builders and for, you know, their contacts and the landscape being copied. They reached out to the, kind of put the design and the drawing together.
Other questions from Mr. Tru?
So when there is something solid for donations, will we be putting that out there?
Yeah, I'll put it, I'll put together a class immunity page. And Sandy has, we already set up an account at the district for donations that had already come in. So then we'll put together a class immunity page where people can go and donate online or they could still make a contribution. And we can collect and manage that.
Yeah.
Great.
Other questions? What is your promotion?
I move to approve the proposed memorial for Officer Kirkpatrick as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
It is a movement seconded to approve the proposed memorial for Officer Kirkpatrick as presented. Recall both please. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglesol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Powsky?
Yes.
Mr. Reed? Get that going? Report and discussion items. Student report. Who's up tonight? Assistant State? And she's on.
Okay, so I was at the high school. The football team has made it to the playoffs for the first time since 2014. The soccer team made it to the state semifinal game this past weekend, but they lost 1-0 to Arrowhead. The student council participated in Six Feet Trick or Treat at Sunset Park. The drama program is showing Legally Blonde, the musical, this weekend. And the Veterans Day program is being streamed virtually and the veterans are being provided with a drive-up breakfast and coffee. Over at the middle school, they held their virtual band concert last week. And then they are holding a fundraiser for the PTO by selling home decor signed kits. At Westside, the student council is holding a candy cane fundraiser and then students made clay pumpkins in their art class. At Jackson, the student council is holding a food drive for the Elkhorn Food Pantry. And Miss Week's first grade class showed the moon base. At Tibbetts, the lower student council is also holding a food drive for the Elkhorn Food Pantry. And the student council held a contest to see who could design the best mask. Miss Lutnik's class, the third graders learned of the impacts of garbage on the planet and they induced the amount of garbage in landfills by upcycling garbage from their houses. At both Tibbetts and Jackson, multiple classes learned about the importance of voting by voting on which snack to have during snack time or which cartoon character they thought would make the best president. Had options, some families participated in a drive-through safari and visited a pumpkin patch. At the middle school at high school level, they included increased students participating in one of our tutoring sessions. And the K8 blended learning students for making digital bots in science by using the internal components, battery-powered toothbrush. And that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Director's report, Mr. Tru. Alright, is this stand-up or sit-down here with the new?
You can stand up.
Okay, yeah, alright, thank you. John Anne Sloan, Community Engagement Coordinator, Elkhorn School District. And I just, I thought it would be interesting to share kind of what's transpired since all this started in March and kind of, you know, what I do when, if you want to change that real quick, Phil. What I knew when March it went blank. Like that calendar that was just loaded and things we were doing and really feeling good about and great momentum and great partnerships, just kind of went blank. And that was a little scary, like, oh, wait a minute, what happens to John? When all this is going on? And so, yeah, it was a, it was a quick transition after that initial like, whoa, this is serious. And we just kicked right off. We had an internship, internship set up with UW Whitewater. And I thought, well, how are we gonna do this? And we ended up being able to do it and get April her last credit so she could graduate from UW Whitewater this time. It became a little creative seeing how she couldn't be here, she couldn't be really engaged in things we were doing because all the things we were doing, we weren't doing. But we were able to come up with stuff where she was able to adult, or help with the meal program, whether it be adult meals or kid meals that we were delivering to different families that couldn't get out or maybe they were quarantined. She created a community health miles walk that people could participate in virtually and log their miles and we had a prize at the end. And part of her major is exercise science and so she was able to help with the strength and conditioning classes for that three-week period in July when they came back up and running, as well as help with kind of looking at what reopening the fitness center in the fall might look like. So we were glad to be able to help her and glad to be able to start a partnership with UW Whitewater that hopefully will continue as we can kind of open our doors to those things. Community meals, so, yeah, I jumped in with helping out with the kind of the setup and how's this distribution gonna look like and help provide supplies to the bus company. And it was kind of all hands on deck. And I think, you know, that was a unique thing learned through this was with everybody, it was what do we need to do and where do we need to go? And that might not look like how we did it every day, but maybe there's help over here needed or help over there. And I think, yeah, that was really interesting and really like amazing to see how everybody is all hands on deck. So, yeah, assisting at Westside, assessing community needs. And community members jumped forward and said, what can we do? And at that time it was, we need face covering. And there was probably six ladies or families that jumped in and dropped off probably 50 of these and said, here, no recognition needed, we're glad to help, thank you. And kind of back to that assessing community needs, Officer Kirkpatrick and I had talked after meals got started and we kind of came to this, you know, our subsidized retirement living communities were struggling. They couldn't have people in, they couldn't get out. And kind of came around to this survey in those facilities to go, what are your needs? And Officer Kirkpatrick was nice enough to go, hey, I'll survey the needs. And then once we got into it and delivering meals there, the intern had delivered some and Officer Kirkpatrick got permission a couple days a week to do the delivery, which was kind of a neat thing to have law enforcement kind of integrate in that and deliver those meals to the assisted living places, which was Gilbert Court and Jackson Creek. Support, we had the Be the Light, you know, cooperation with the high school. What a great event. The fire department participated, the community members far and wide came. I was actually pretty shocked, all of our community that came out that didn't have or doesn't have kids in the district, that just came out to see or wave a hand or as they drive by. We sold almost 100 graduation signs to the community. We just wanted to support the graduates and whatever they could do and put them in their business windows. The United Way had been working with the food pantry, the food diaper pantry, and donated pallets of frozen foods for our meal program. That's kind of a surplus. They had extra and they loaded up pickup truck and brought it down. And the Serge Foundation was kind enough to recognize like what we had done with the meal program and not just for kids, but the community part is kind of what moved them. And they donated $5,000 to help support that adult meal program from fundraisers that they had done. And certainly the connection with Elkhorn Park and Rec, which we'll move into here shortly. Isn't that engaging that I got you? Or are you sleeping? Essential Services, but as I was thinking like, wow, you know, we can't do like large events, we can't have groups together, things are shut down, what's gonna happen? I kind of went back to where I came from and thought, you know, Essential Services are still gonna be looking for places to train and to do the things they need, they need to do. And maybe they don't have the spaces that are large enough for that type of stuff. And so what came out of that was Walworth County Sheriff's dive team was like, oh my gosh, if we could use the pool, we have to get training in. We don't have anywhere to go train because all the pools are closed. Lake Geneva Water Safety Patrol, hey, we have all of our safety patrol workers in our guards. They used to train at Inspirational Ministries, they were shut down. So, yeah, kind of working through that, Elkhorn Police Department, the business fitness training, using the track and the facility. And the Walworth County EMS water rescue training. They were super appreciative, like, oh my gosh, we really can do this, you know? Yeah, you're an essential service and we want you to be trained and we want you to be helping what you're supposed to do. So, yeah, kind of reverted back to where I came from and reached out to those people and said, we're here if you need us. And they took advantage of it. Along with that was government services. Walworth County was like, I don't know how we're gonna do jury selection, our rooms aren't big enough. And so we had it set up with the judges and the county clerk to say, hey, if you need to do jury selection when you're ready, we can spread that out in the auditorium and work our way through that. And they never did it because they kept postponing, but we were set to do it. And I thought, well, what a great, what a great use of that. And then Walworth County Victim Impact Panel, which is a panel that speaks to offenders of drunk driving offenses. It's part of their probation that they have to go through these courses, listen to other victims of their crime. And so we hosted them two times now and that's worked out really well. And then the Elkhorn Police Testing and Referendum meetings. And we were able to, during over the summer, hold four blood drops. So due to this space, the Red Cross was pretty excited about being able to spread out and still do some. And then, yeah, if you want to pass on this, so partner organizations really partnered up, I think, with the rec. Oh, you can go one more, thank you. Sorry, yeah, sorry about that. And probably one of the bigger ones was putting together this outdoor movie. And we had about 25, between 25 and 30 cars, if I remember right, turned the back of the high school and do a drive-in movie theater. Even had the Jurassic Park Jeep there, we did not have dinosaurs. But, yeah, it was a fun night, a good night. And kind of a spin-off of this is law enforcement was doing their, I lost it now. It's not Night Under the Lights, but it's National Night Out.
Right, yeah, National Night Out.
That next week and they said, hey, can we use the high school? We want to wrap our event up with the drive-in movie. And so we kind of double dipped on this where this was a Friday night and theirs was a Tuesday night and we weren't able to use it twice. And, yeah, so something that people ended up taking advantage of. And again, partnering with the rec, the Elkhorn Strong shirts and the Elkhorn signs, we had partnered up and then part of the monies from those went to scholarships that the rec gives out for maybe kids that can't afford the registration fees for different programs. And then the other part of the money went to the adult meal program to help supplement some of that. And then we were still able to host them for their camps and adventure days during the summer so that they could spread out, they could break up into smaller groups with their camps and spread out. And then that upper right Andy had referenced was the Six Feet Trick or Treat Student Council Group. You're gonna have to like kind of click your mind through, I think these are gonna come in one of the times. So, yeah, just some odds and ends stuff that places and businesses that we were able to host. Black tennis was able to operate because they could not operate inside. Our track and fields were open and used by the community to walk and run. We announced and kind of mapped out all of our school areas and where those wifi areas were around the school. So people needing to have wifi access, maybe they didn't have it at home or whatever it might be. Both of our dance studios in town were still able to perform by limiting crowds and also dancing with masks for smaller groups. So they were excited to still get their performances in. And then DSCI, which is the Dementia Friendly Community Initiative. We have been working strong with them to kind of make our schools dementia-friendly so that our dementia, our dementia community could attend our programs, choir concerts, musicals, plays, things like that. This all kind of put a stop to that. But what we did is kind of relooked at that and now we're working towards a memory and music program where Human Services gets a grant for these MP3 players. Students, or I should say, Human Services will then reach out to the families in their programs, the caregivers or the people with dementia and get some information from them, like, are you interested in this? And then it goes to a group or a club at the school. They have to call the caregiver or the people and ask, there's a series of set questions, like what kind of music, what era, what do you like? Work their way through this, they download the music on the MP3, which goes back to the dementia patient as a therapy tool. So kind of like rethinking where we were going with this, like, hey, concerts and stuff are really not gonna be a great idea during this, but maybe there's something else we can do. And kind of reworking that and just if we would be a pilot program for dementia-friendly and being a dementia-friendly site as we move forward and see how it works in schools.
What clubs are getting involved with that?
Abbott has expressed they would like to do the MP3 because it kind of fits in with that reaching out and learning how to speak to adults and interviewing people.
Yeah.
And I knew someone in the program. That was an easy sell. But, yeah, and then the other initiative kind of in the works is they make these, they bring all the materials and they make these boards with like different things on that you can touch or pull or switch or turn, which is kind of that, you know, initiating your mind and hopefully working with our tech department to go, if we provide all the supplies, will the kids make these? And then they'll go to a fan.
Right.
Yeah, kind of reinventing some things. Yeah, just making the shift to some of our fitness classes that we're offering outdoors instead of indoors. Offering our meeting spaces in larger spaces to groups like United Wave Board and things like that so they could meet together and still spread out. And then, yeah, our courts outside for community pickleball, which is really well attended. It's amazing the people that play pickleball. They love it. And reopening the fitness center and lap swim this fall. And that's gone really well. I was nervous at first that we'd have 50 people waiting at the door to get in, but a slow trickle and probably no more than 10 people at a time have been in there in the last month. So it's worked out really well. And people have been really respectful of the masks and cleaning and things like that. And I think there's one more, there you go. And last week we were able to start Blessings in a Backpack a little different. Instead of packing the bags and putting them in the backpacks in the school with the volunteers in the school, the rec department offered up their room and all the volunteers meet there, we pack them. And then those groups that they need for your school are dropped off at the school and then delivered from there by the school people to kind of eliminate that extra people ability. Yeah. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
I just want to say for years, we've always said the school is part of the community and we are really seeing that, you know?
Oh, my goodness.
With everything that's going on. And I just, you know, I thank you, I thank everybody that's been involved in all this because again, it's a part of the community.
Absolutely.
So I, you know, just thank everybody that's been involved.
Yeah, no, and it's, it's been a great thing and the school has been so supportive of it and kind of let it run and, yeah, great people to work with. And like I said, when this happened, I thought, oh, boy, now I'm like, this may have just eliminated. Like, what do you do? And you really had to kind of reinvent the way of doing things and, yeah, you just couldn't walk into stores and go, hey. And, so, yeah, thank you.
The last time you spoke to us, you asked us to email you what we thought community service or community engagement was like during that time. And I had nothing.
I know.
So I don't know if anybody else responded.
I had gotten a couple.
Put that together, but like, that was, I went home that night, I was like, I don't, I don't even know. Yeah.
And that was my first thought was, oh, boy.
Because we were all just so unsure of what.
Yeah, you know, I thought of all the groups and clubs we host for different things, the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and Iwanas and square dancing and like, oh my God, they all just, you know, were closed. And then all those things you do in the community with going to meetings and partnering and great ideas coming out of it, like, it was all stuff. Oh, boy, I hope my law enforcement certification can run out because I. But, no, it's been wonderful and, like I said, awesome people to work with. Yeah, I would change it, so, thank you.
We appreciate your leadership, it's really been, yeah.
Thank you, very proud, thank you.
You know, I think the more that we do stuff like this, the more we offer up our space and our help to the community. That, I mean, I, you know, we have a very supportive community of, throughout the year. When we, I brought the road to the voters and do a referendum.
They have a concept.
They do, they have an idea of how much we are involved in the community and that we're not just this little island unto ourselves. We, you know, we're truly a community partner. And I, that's reflected in how people support us, not that we're awful.
Alright. Agreed, and I was very grateful to have John and have that position as we rolled into this timeframe where it really was a pivot in what we were looking at to do from the school district. I think the team and with the school board support kind of recognized that from an organizational standpoint that we were best positioned to really help the community, whether it be from the meals or other supports that were provided. So it was really nice to have John in that position as that community engagement coordinator. And it's been a lot of work and I think the people in the community, like you said, Julia, really appreciated it and recognized it as well.
Congratulations.
Okay, I did not receive a visual. Okay, I did not receive a visual update on options. What I can tell you is it looks very much like it did last board report. Although the pavement, I was over there last Wednesday and I did a walkthrough with the manager. And yeah, everything's moving along. It looks like they'll be wrapping up around the first part of November. They were still doing some of the cutaway for the drive on the front end. But things are progressing and on track, not quite as early as they had hoped. I think part of it is lead time for some of the materials and supplies. But we're looking at that first week in January now.
I drove by today and the drop-off in the front of the school, all the curb and gutter is in place. And the base is put down. They haven't put asphalt in yet. The north side parking lot, they were actually pouring and rolling the asphalt there. And they brought a lot of fill in to work the southern parking structure. So they're moving quite a bit.
And when I went there, they're taking advantage of the good weather, getting the brick cleaned and the tuck pointing down and replacing the bad bricks on the outside of the building as well. So the good weather really probably helped them out on that.
When I drove by about five o'clock, they had the north lot completed along with that front half-circle area. So.
Oh, great.
I don't know whether tomorrow does not look promising, I don't think. Otherwise, I'm sure they probably finish up. But the other, just to add, Tricia Spende and her crew have been busily working with the architects on color selections for flooring and wall surfaces and such. So they've really been working hard. I think they've got some really nice colors being set up for the school as well.
All right, COVID nineteen updates.
All right, Bill, could you click on the first, yeah, link? This is our school district dashboard. Again, this will get updated tomorrow. I, we've been sending out an update and, you know, I'd hope to get to a point where we don't have to send those out weekly, but things are pretty fluid still. So we're continuing to send those updates out. There's, in this last update, if you didn't get a chance to read it, there is a new testing system set up in Whitewater. Summing this up in a nutshell, the, you know, Wisconsin, we know, has been leading the nation in COVID rates for the last little while, and it finally did catch up to us in Walworth County. And the county sent out a press release, or the last meeting we had, is that they had had six hundred new cases within the last two-week period. That was a week ago. What I can tell you is that we are seeing the uptick of COVID cases manifest itself within the school community. And what I mean by that are students, parents of students and staff getting exposed. So the numbers that you see here, even after the update on Friday, we had an exposure at Step Ahead, which resulted in two of the three classrooms getting quarantined or a total of twenty-five students. So Step Ahead has transitioned to remote learning. They felt that was the best option because they only had the one of the three classes that wasn't quarantined and they just felt that was a good precaution that they wanted to follow. So they'll be in remote learning until November nineteenth. Up at the high school, you see we've, you know, got increased more cases than we've ever had as far as active cases. We're still doing a really good job within that school setting of not exposing a lot of students overall. At Westside, we did have a situation where, you know, there was a faculty member that did expose that number of students, the twenty-one, happened to be a staff member who sees all the kids in the building. So we've taken a few measures to make sure that, you know, that doesn't happen again in the future. But to this point, we still haven't had what they consider an outbreak within the school setting. What that means is where it's being spread from one individual to another individual to another individual and so forth. So a lot of our cases are exposure at home or, you know, outside of that school setting. And/or the quarantines are, you know, due to exposure within the school setting. Last time I checked our dashboard today, this again is just the students and/or staff who are exposed within the school setting. And all in total, we're monitoring one hundred and fifty-five individuals, both students and staff, that are either quarantined or have tested positive for COVID. The vast majority having been quarantined. So what I can tell you too is we're running into staffing difficulties. It's very common for us to have positions not filled. This morning, the high school had three positions that weren't filled. So the principals, it's kind of all hands on deck. They're filling into those classrooms. The teachers will teach remotely whenever they can, but they don't want those classrooms there. You know, right now, they're still trying to get a adult body in the room with the students, not just the teacher virtually. So I do have great concern. I said all along and shared with families that our greatest risk of having to shut down is more than likely not having enough staff and enough people to be able to cover the rooms. So that's where we're at within the district aspect. Some people have asked me, well, when is the county, when would you guys close? That threshold, again, when, you know, the county, when we talked about it earlier in the fall, was to kind of have conversations when we hit that around, you know, upwards of, you know, twenty percent of our students or staff being out quarantined and/or sick. We're nowhere near that. We're under five percent district-wide. But in some of our buildings, we may be, you know, getting closer to and/or approaching that. And so we'll have to continue to monitor that. I can tell you last week, when I had my superintendent meeting, there wasn't a single superintendent in the county that felt like they were in the position where they needed to go remote. But we know that all the numbers were going up. I saw today that Burlington has gone to remote. I think they had twenty-eight or twenty-plus positive COVID cases in their building is what I had heard the report was. Don't quote me on that. But again, what they cited their concern was a lack of bus drivers, a lack of staffing to be able to handle the kids in school. So wish I had a better picture to paint, but our numbers are reflective of what's going on in the community at large. And who knows how much Halloween parties have to play in this. But the handful of positive cases we're getting rolled in now, we're active participants in Halloween parties. So then I wanted to share, if you can click on the next one, Bill. Well, before we go to that, were there any questions on the district numbers? I apologize.
The question I have is, are you gonna assess school by school and going to virtual? If you get to that certain percentage?
Yeah, that's the, that's been the plan all along and the recommendation from the county is to assess it school by school and look at it from that standpoint, unless the county were to come in and say, hey, this is just really out of control. We'd like all schools to go remote for a couple of weeks. Well, at that point, then we would, you know, follow that guidance. But at this point, the guidance is still to address it on a school-by-school basis. So for example, in Williams Bay, they had a situation where, you know, six of their eight middle school teachers were exposed. And so they closed their middle school and then they had exposure in their elementary school, so they closed that. So despite the three schools are within the same building, their high school students are still continuing face-to-face. Because it was really based on where the staffing is and who's been quarantined.
Thank you.
Any other questions on our numbers and where that's at? Okay. One of the things that we found with COVID and, you know, you might be asking, why do I have the calendar up here? Is we are putting a lot of extra work. Our teachers, I can't say enough for them and the administrative team, they're really going above and beyond. They're giving up their preps to go and cover for other staff. Because again, rolling into this school year, we had two-thirds of our subpool that said they just weren't comfortable coming back and subbing for us. So that's been part of the issue as well, as well as, you know, the amount of people that when you have to be out for seventy-two hours because you have symptoms or a minimum fourteen days because of the quarantine. So with that in mind, a lot of the staff have been asked to do a lot more. It puts a lot more on their plate. What I'd like to do, and I've seen some other districts doing this, it's probably, you know, maybe something that I should have been more proactive on before the school year started. But I should have been more proactive in building in days or breaks for the teachers or the staff for them to recuperate or to take a breath, so to speak. And something that school districts have moved away from, we have not, but some school districts have moved away from building in extra time for snow days. We didn't move away from getting rid of that. We still have five days' worth of snow days built into our calendar for the high school and the middle school. And actually over ten days' worth at the elementary because they're not required to attend school as long. What I'd like to do is, I just wanted to fill the board out at this point and I can put it on as an actionable item at the next board meeting. But I'd like to look at the calendar in the second half of the year and make sure that, to be frank, build in some of those days as days off, which I think would give our staff a little bit of a break to get caught up or to just recuperate from a social-emotional standpoint with the amount that they're putting on in regards to extra work. But I wanted to bring that up and share that as part of the COVID update and get your sense or feeling on that. I think when we looked at it this morning as a director group, we felt that building in some of that time, starting in the, starting in February and then March and April, and if possibly a day in May, would work really well. Some other districts have just called them built-in, you know, that we're doing a snow day on this day. Meaning they're also giving their kids the break that, you know, you don't need to do work on that day. Just take the day to either get caught up or take a breather, whatever's needed. Thoughts on that conceptually before we put together a formal plan for the next meeting?
I think as you look at the calendar, one of the things you'd want to do is look at possible testing days and talk with your staff about that, about recuperating after or in preparation for. Because the mental, emotional toll it's taking is pretty, pretty great right now. And ask them around that testing schedule, what would best fit for you? Because, yeah, the teachers have gone above and beyond and they're carrying a heck of a load. So if we could go with them and find out how best to suit their need.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up testing, Paul, because that was a second concept or idea that came up today. And I asked Mrs. Bosch to go back to the high school staff and seek their input. But one of the ideas that came up was suspending final exams for this school year. We've heard feedback from a number of kids, especially when they've been quarantined, having that added stress of twenty percent of their grade being accounted for within that final exam. Anastasia, how would you, I'd be, I'm curious from the student's perspective, how, what are your thoughts are on that? But basically asking the board, by policy, we have a policy that was implemented in 2011. I'm guessing by probably Mrs. Bosworth wanted it or the staff in combination. But by policy, where we, you know, it states that we'll have final exams that make up twenty percent of the grade. I guess would also seek to, you know, assuming the teachers were on board and the board was okay with that, to suspend that final exam policy for the school year. But thoughts, Anastasia, or from a student's perspective?
I know just being quarantined for the second time, I just feel like I don't learn as much when I'm at home. Maybe due to my fault or just the situation of not being able to like interact with my teachers and my peers. But I do feel like in some classes like calculus, I know I'm not going to learn near as much as I should during this two-week period. So I do feel like a final exam might be a little bit more stressful than usual just because I feel like I'm missing so much instruction that I would be receiving if I was actually sitting in a desk.
Yeah, I would also agree with that. I'd say it's kind of a toss-up on if you get contact traced or not. Like, it's not really up to you. It could just be based on who you sit next to in class. So my final exam grade could essentially tank my grade just because of who I sat by. And it's kind of a scary prospect because I know, much like Anastasia, I cannot learn nearly as well when I'm online.
Right. Is it scary not knowing, like, if COVID's still going to be there in, you know, in the months to come?
Kind of.
As far as like when that could happen? I mean, you never know, like, initially, like, when you're going to be quarantined. So for some of these kids that are worried about testing in the spring and AP exams like that, there's going to be a lot of stress there already in May.
I would definitely agree that that's kind of like the scariest part of the COVID thing, which I'm trying to stay optimistic that we'll have a vaccine by that time or that we'll be able to try at least to do our best to go back to normal by the spring. However, if that wouldn't happen, that would kind of annoy and wreck some of the students because all the fun stuff happens in the spring. You also want to pass out on as many AP exams as you can so you can get as many college credits as you can. And going into that, without that is not nearly as fun.
I personally think one is a good idea to relieve some of the stress. But I'd be curious to what the teachers think, but I think that that's, in my opinion, probably a good idea for this year.
You need time.
Beyond that.
Yeah, and I think we could always revisit that later. But what I'm hearing from both students is that you feel that would be a good idea to suspend those final exams. Any concern, and again, we're not taking action on this tonight. This is something Mrs. Bosch would go back to the school. But I think it would be good to, you know, obviously get their input. But just from a straw poll, I can't see the people at the meeting, is there anyone that has serious concerns with suspending the final exams? And I think we'd need to do that across the board so that it's not left like optional. It's just there's no final exams this year. Otherwise, you will have different classes where they have it. And I think that would kind of defeat the purpose of alleviating some of that stress for the kids and the staff. Paul, as you mentioned, it's a lot of work in grading that and putting that together.
Right, and having, and having a mandate of twenty percent. I just have a problem with that right now. It was always questionable to begin with, but right now it's really more when, when kids are competing for standing and teachers with evaluation and stuff, and they don't have a lot of control or they do the best they can. And when the ball falls short, whether it's the student or the teacher, that's just a lot to carry.
All right. Director team, is there anything that I'm missing from our discussion this morning on the COVID update?
No, I think you covered everything, Jason, and thank you for bringing forth all of the ideas that we talked about earlier today.
All right, I think that's it for the COVID update unless there's any other questions. Oh, I had one more thing. Sorry. The, I was in a meeting related to legal updates in regards to COVID. And in my last meeting, I know I shared this with the school board in a communication via email, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood publicly that the county has changed their stance from a encouraging of people to wear face coverings to a recommended, a strongly recommended that face coverings are to be worn indoors. That changes the calculus in regards to what we do or have to do as a school district. So say, right now, it's kind of irrelevant because there's Governor Evers mandate that's in place. But what legal has determined, this is Boardman and Clark that was running the legal seminar, and the insurance carriers have determined that because COVID is a known danger, is how they classify it, that if you don't follow the health recommendations. that if you don't follow the health recommendations, um and, and it is very um specific. So if they say we recommend you do this, well, that's a recommendation. If they say we think it would be good or we encourage you to do this or consider this, that's not a recommendation um legally, how they determine it. But once they make that recommendation, if you don't follow it, then that opens yourself up to liability and the potential to be sued. And what the insurance companies are saying is world drop you, we won't cover you, we won't protect you if you're not following the recommendation. Because even if it's difficult to prove in court that, you know, Johnny got COVID at the school setting, they were negligent because they didn't follow recommendations, therefore they should cover all the medical expenses. Um they'll definitely be able to take you to court and there's probably going to be lawyers willing to take districts to court like that if recommendations weren't followed, which then incurs a lot of legal expenses from the insurance companies. And so with that in mind, I just wanted to make everyone aware because I get once, every time we get close to these Governor Evers deadlines, I start getting people who don't like wearing face coverings or the parents contacting me to check and see, hey, is this going to go away now? And in light of the county's new recommendation, um the message or what I need to share with them is we have to follow those recommendations. And as of right now, it's recommendations, so that face covering um requirement would continue on. What I would say is overwhelmingly amongst the students and the staff, the, the kids are doing it, they're making it work, they're happy to be in, in school overall and for the most part, they get it. I don't see or hear of a, a lot of issues. I can, I think I've had a total of four, maybe five emails since the start of school um in regards to complaining about having to wear the face coverings. Um and if they have a medical exemption, they don't have to wear the face covering. We have lots of checks and balances that are there. So that was the other piece I wanted to make sure was publicly shared and communicated in case there were any questions on that from the group.
Questions, Mr. Truett?
The, the comment that I would make is that um you know, we're seeing a ton of spread in the community, but we're not being seen spread within the schools themselves.
Correct.
We're consistently wearing face coverings in the schools and that may be what is preventing a lot of the spread that's, that's happening outside of the school. So, you know, I think why change a good thing, you know, why? Why not fate in, you know, not only from the legal standpoint, but from a practical standpoint. Uh and I know I haven't, you know, I know months ago I wasn't a huge advocate of, of mask wearing, but as this has progressed and as this has, we learn more, I think the evidence is showing that you know, we're, we've been able to prevent schools spread or spread within the school because everyone is masked up. Um we have no control or no idea what people are doing after school and more than likely they're taking them off and you know, so, and but that is where the spread is happening is outside of school, so.
I, I'm really glad you brought that up, um Julia, because I mean, that's probably the most valid point of any, regardless of whatever the, the legal requirement is. I, I completely agree. Um I shared with the, the administrative team, I won't dwell on this too long, but my sister who's in Texas, they were in the first school, she lives in the first school district that opened back on August twelfth and there are seventeen thousand student and staff school district, so quite a bit larger than us. Um but they um, just a few weeks ago, they looked back after their first nine weeks and they had had a, a total of one hundred and fifty-six positive COVID cases within the school setting. And they looked back at those who wore face coverings within the school setting, less than one percent contracted COVID. Um those who didn't wear the face coverings, it was less than four percent. So it wasn't a, a huge difference, but there was a marked difference to the point where, and their, their health department's different than ours, but and within their school setting, they're so confident that if you're wearing the face coverings and you have a COVID exposure, they're not requiring the individuals to quarantine. Um we can't do that in Wisconsin, but that's how confident they are in, in how effective the face coverings have been. Is that they're not even requiring the, the kids or the staff to quarantine, um so long as they all had the face coverings on. Um, all right, that's all I had on the COVID update. Sorry to linger on that, but it is probably the, the largest issue going on within all of our schools.
All right, personnel, we'll get that.
All right, we have the resignation of Kara Scala, who served as special education teacher at the high school. She's going to be uh resigning on December fourth. We want to thank Kara for her service to the school district. We have a transfer of Rosendo Huerta um to the uh middle school custodial position. Transfer of Lydia Perez, who will be going to the Tibbetts Custodial Position. The appointment of the Malia Craver, who will be serving as an EL teaching assistant at the high school. The appointment of Jody Tust, who will be serving as a health aide at Tibbetts. The appointment of William Uber, who will be serving as a computer specialist. Uh this is that additional position. Morgan Lukovich, who will be serving as a high school girls' assistant basketball coach. Um and then Connor Alt, who will be serving as a high school girls' basketball assistant. And Bill, can you scroll down as, I'm sorry, what?
What is William Uber starting or has he started? The computer specialist.
Yeah, you know, I don't have that start. Do you know, Bill?
Still let it go through the uh onboarding process. I, I don't have an exact date, but I certainly can find out.
Okay, well it's something new, you created this year.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so he just, I think they finished the interviews just last week.
Okay.
Other questions?
I move to approve a personal recommendation sheet for November ninth, twenty twenty, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check. The district mandated drug screening is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move is second. It's your through the personal recommendation sheet for November ninth, two thousand twenty, including employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening is presented. Go public.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mrs. Bray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Popowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes, motion carried. Uh school guests.
All right, we have two school guests to present this evening. The first one, uh Mr. Greg and Jill Wells have donated five hundred dollars to the Parent Connections Program and five hundred dollars to the Food Service Program. And we also have a donation from the Elkhorn Quick Sticks. They donated thirty lacrosse sticks valued at six hundred dollars that will be shared amongst the three elementary schools. Um had the opportunity to see Mr. Mike um teaching the kids how to play lacrosse and working with the kids down at Jackson this past week.
Thank them and looking for a motion to approve our generous gifts.
I move to approve the generous gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Okay.
The move is seconded to approve the generous gifts of Greg and Jill Wells and the Elkhorn Quick Sticks as presented. Roll call votes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Joe O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Popowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes, motion carried. Our audit, Mr. Truett.
You should have a copy of our annual audit report for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Uh a lot of information in here. I'm not planning on going through the whole report, but I certainly will address any questions you might have. The front end of the report is called the management letter. That's kind of the key pieces of the scoreboard because you get kind of a sense, how are we doing, what are the concerns? And usually, last year we didn't have any recommendations. There are a few recommendations this year and that's not unusual. Um couple of those relate to, we have what's called a uh federal federal grant operation manual, which they recommend that we have. So one of the recommendations they're having us do is update the procurement portion of that manual to align with the new um Office of Management Budget requirements or recommendations on, on purchasing standards and what kind of purchasing standards you have to do within those categories. So it's basically just aligning with those new O M B uh regulations that came out in two thousand twenty. Um annual notification that we have OPAB, we should include that as part of our annual notices so that people know we have an OPAB. Those are recommendation. Um the appraisal company, although we had them come out, they did actual physical appraisal this year. They had some duplications in a couple of their points, so we need them to correct those changes. And then kind of relating to the O M B report is the capitalization policy, looking at adjusting that. Most districts now use what's called five thousand dollars or more. That means the amount that you're depreciating. So assets over five thousand need to appreciate those under you. So that's kind of the new standard, which actually helps us in terms of just overall record keeping, to be honest with you. So those are the recommendations. They didn't find any um problems in terms of working with the school district, no other closures. Another area that typically comes up in school audits is what they call segregation of duties and internal controls. That's pretty common. They haven't recommended that. They look at how we're operating, say you've got a pretty good segregation duties, but that's not unusual in these schools and school audits. I think as a board member, one of the things you want to kind of track is, is if you see the same things year after year that they're recommending and they're not getting addressed, then I think it's why, you know, what can we do to address different things?
Over the years, we've changed that chain of command and, and all that. It's been recommended, we worked on that.
You're right, so.
Yep.
Yep, so I think we modified enough that that doesn't come up as, as something they're recommending.
At that time it was even difficult because I don't think you had enough staff where you like figured around enough.
That's usually when it comes down.
Like when you don't really have enough.
Yeah, and ideally, from an accounting standpoint, it, it may not be like a nominal really to have that among staff just to meet goals.
Yeah, I, I was amazed coming to Elkhorn that we still would get dinged on that, being that Elkhorn was quite a bit larger than our small districts and it, it's almost like they want twenty people in your finance office to have enough coverage. It's, it's amazing how hard it is to meet that standard. I might be exaggerating a little, but.
But yeah, anyway, so then our financial statements are, are reflected here. There's the front end section, which is called our it referred to as management discussion and analysis, which is kind of the portion that I'll put together after the financial statements have done and that's supposed to provide a little more information to the public and our overall financial statements. Um couple of pages, I was just going to highlight, I think a lot of this is looking at what they call district-wide statements, which is kind of looking at everything together, but I, I think by fund makes a lot of more sense in terms of reports. So one of the things I was going to share with you in terms of our operating budget or our general fund, we had revenues about forty-one million and then expenditures, expenditures were thirty-nine. Then we do an operating transfer for what's with a co-op alternative high school program. So our net adjustment and fund balance went up about nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars last year. Revenues went, was about two hundred thousand dollars more than what we budgeted. Much of that was open enrollment. And then our expenditures was about seven hundred thousand dollars less. So the net of that is that nine hundred thousand. Now, looking back at the budget you approved at the last meeting, as you know, we, we are building in a deficit of about four hundred and eighty thousand. So we're fortunate that we have this balance to work with, but we will be using some of that this year.
Yeah.
So um another thing I mentioned, I think on page lost my mouse here. Your debt, uh terms of our debt load, um we cannot exceed ten percent of our equalized value, um which would be two hundred and sixteen million. We are well below that, so we're about one point seven percent. Um we create a debt load, so I think that and that includes the new value issues this last year. Um and then last here, I think we talked about, I brought up OPAB. Another report here, this kind of gives you a little information. Um and what's nice here, it gives you kind of four years of history. So back in two thousand sixteen, our liability was about four point three million dollars, whereas today it's about one point six million dollars. So back in two thousand seventeen, it was about thirty percent of our payroll and now it's about ten percent. So it's heading in the right direction in terms of that. Yeah, so, um and then there's some supplement forms here and then the final section is what's called the single audit. And this year, they audited the uh food service program. And um I think they did it with the state program too, which is equalization aid and really nothing to audit there because it was just an eight dollar rebate from the state, but that's what they chose as part of their single audit. So that gets reported separately to the federal government. Um and they didn't find any problems with that. And then a number of pages which give you all of the dollars that flow through the school district from the different state federal agencies. You know, kind of a summary of that. So um the audit starts in May. We had actually a whole new team of auditors over this year, even though the company, so I, I think that's nice because you get a little fresh eyes in terms of look at it. Um what I thought is they were a little more efficient and timely in getting things done and, and the audit actually was done about in October. So that's about a month earlier than what we're doing. So that's the audit report. Certainly if you've got other questions on that, we can.
A lot of great numbers in there, Bill. A lot of numbers. It'll make you go to sleep if you, if you need it.
They're really big.
It's better than Medicare. Any questions for Mr. Truett?
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, looking for a motion to accept the audit report.
I move to accept the twenty nineteen twenty financial audit report as presented.
For a second.
Second.
So moved in second to accept the twenty nineteen twenty twenty financial audit report as presented. Roll public votes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Joe O'Donnell?
Yes.
The Bray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Popowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes, motion carried. Announcements?
Let me pull up my notes. Um I do have one announcement. Um just a reminder, the school board election, uh which is coming up, incumbents for this year are Matt O'Donnell, Barb Fisher and Julia Ingersoll. The memo with election information uh should be at your um seating location. It's always a good idea to publicly declare if you will run or not for reelection. Uh Elkhorn residents who are interested in running for school board should contact Jody Esman in the district office for a packet of materials.
I will be running.
I will be running.
I will be running.
Yay.
All right. That's all I have for the announcements, other than just a reminder that we do have a closed session.
All right, so looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move during to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five front one front C to discuss a staff members contract. School board will not reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second into adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five one C to discuss the staff members contract. The school board will not reconvene in open session. Roll public votes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Joe O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Popowski?
Yes.
Sure. Yes. Motion carried.